Welcome, everybody, to the Bellevue City Council Special Meeting. It is Tuesday, September 26, 2023, at 5:30 PM. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you could stand, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns. And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you. And can I also have you refresh your computers?
Okay, please refresh. And then I would make note that Councilman Burns could not make it tonight. He is listening in, so he is listening to the discussion. Item three, Open Meetings Act. This meeting will be done in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item four, Approval of Agenda, Consent Agenda, Claims and Advisory Committee Reports. 4A, Approval of the Agenda. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, I'd like to make an amendment. I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Councilman Cook?
I'd like to amend the agenda by moving item six to right after item 7A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, to amend the agenda, to move item six right after 7A. Any questions on that? Please vote.
Didn't work that time. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Ann Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we have a motion by Cook, second by Welch, to approve the agenda now as amended. Any questions? Please vote.
I'm going to do roll call again. Casey?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
McCaw?
Yes.
Preister?
Yes.
Ann Welch?
Yes.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item 4B, Approval of the Consent Agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion we approve the consent agenda, second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
Mr. Preister, is yours coming through? There it is. Okay. Still no vote for you. Okay. What's your vote?
Oh, it is.
Yours came through. All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to seven, as amended, ordinance number 4127, An Ordinance to Adopt the Annual Appropriations Bill. Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
Just a sec. It's not coming up for me. Let me just read it off the ordinance itself. Ordinance number 4127, An Ordinance to Adopt the Budget Statement to Be Termed, The Annual Appropriations Bill, To Appropriate Sums for Necessary Expenses and Liabilities to Provide for an Effective Date.
Thank you. Item 7A. Resolution number 2023-24, A Resolution to Set the 2023-2024 Property Tax Request. And I will, before I open the public hearing, I just want to give some instructions on how to conduct this in the importance of people's time and members of the public will be allotted three minutes and may not yield their allotted time or remaining time to anyone else. Please refrain from comments involving personal or slanderous attacks or language that is profane, vulgar, inflammatory, threatening, abusive, or disparaging. And I will open up the public hearing, but I'm going to make a little statement before. Myself and five of the city council members and several members of the city staff attended the joint public hearing last week and listened intently to the public's concerns about the property tax request. Since then, you have had multiple, we have had multiple discussions, as well as myself, with the city staff and members of the public. And the city's councils, city council's budget task force has met to evaluate those concerns. It's my belief that the property tax request is based on a budget that meets the current and future needs of the city and builds on the foundation your administration has established. Further, I'd like to just say that we have been working on this, this isn't this year's budget. We've been working on this for five years. The city was stretched, to say the least. When I became mayor, about almost five years ago, our police department was fractured. It was, it was, it was in bad shape. Our fire department, we were moving from a volunteer to a full-paid fire department, which was established from the prior administration, with no funds to pay it. We had, three months into my term, my first term, we had, I'd call them biblical floods in our area, which is a difficult, that's difficult for even, nobody's ever dealt with it, so. Difficult times, followed by COVID. And I'm happy to say, after a little under five years, our city has a fully-paid police department, fully-staffed, equipped. Our fire department is fully-equipped, fully-staffed. Our credit rating is a double-A-plus credit rating. When we basically had no money to do anything, we kicked a lot of projects down the road. Our foundation for the city of Bellevue, I feel, is very well rebuilt right now. There is a next step. We, it's a transformational change. We've always been a bedroom community. Taxes are high on bedroom communities. There's no industry. There's no entertainment dollars coming in. So, we know what we have to do to fix that. We have to bring industry here to enlarge in our tax base. We have to bring outside dollars in, outside entertainment dollars in. We have to have more resale sales tax. That is what fixes the problem that we have. And I agree. Our mill levy is too high. Now, I can't, this council or myself cannot be responsible for your school taxes, your NRD taxes, your metro taxes. I still argue that city government tax is the most valuable tax and the most affordable tax that we pay. With, on a hundred and, let's say, a $250,000 house. If you live in a house that's valued at $250,000, you are paying $127, that's rounded up, per month for police protection, for fire protection, for streets without, that are not full potholes, that are cleared in the wintertime, parks, pools, library, and a plethora of other city services, for $127 a month. Now, even with the change of staying with the state's recommended 2%, plus our .99% growth rate, that might change that. I think it's 114, something like that, a month. That's what dropping that mill levy means on a $250,000 house. So, we're still going to try, we're not going to try, we're doing it. We're talking to over $2 billion worth of new investment on the south side of Bellevue at this time. If that happens, our total valuation of the city is $5.5 billion right now. If we add 2 billion, even when you, even when you add for the new services, the new streets that we have to add, you're probably talking about a 20% decrease in the mill levy. That is the only way we are going to get our taxes under control. But again, at the joint meeting, I think a lot of the public thinks that I'm responsible for school lunches, for buses, for the NRD. Those are a lot of tax levies that are out there. But I'm gonna, I just want to state my opinion that I think our city tax is, sure, it's a little bit high. We're going to get it better, but it's got the most value out of all your taxes. And I want to state one more thing. Right now, the city of Bellevue pays a per capita expense of $1,670. That's $1,670 per person that it takes us to run the city of Bellevue. That is the lowest per capita rate in the state. Papillion is a little over $3,500 per person, almost twice the expense they're spending on each citizen. La Vista is $4,400. Gretna is over $10,000 per person. Omaha, I believe, is still about 20, or right around $2,400. I went to Kansas, I went everywhere. You are getting a lot of bang for your buck from the services of the city of Bellevue, and our future looks great. I'm sorry, but we're asking to bear with us a couple more years so we can, we can bring all this industry and new dollars in. So, that's what I want to say. Please remember the rules of the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing, and I will have our attorney, Amy Battalion, call your name and please come to the front.
The first speaker is Brian Hanson.
So, I'm going to ask you to state your name, your address, sign in, and we'll give you a 15-second warning when, when you're about to your three minutes.
And Mr. Hanson, it looks like you've already signed in with your address, so you don't need to do that again.
Brian Hanson, 2704 Dorkdale Avenue. I was here at the previous meeting. I'll ask again why we didn't have a religious invocation tonight? Is it the subject we're dealing with, or what? I don't know. The mayor mentioned tonight that, in, that the city's stretched. Well, the taxpayers are stretched also. Many of them are living on fixed incomes. They're paying by credit card. They're doing things that they wouldn't do. The economy has stretched the taxpayers, period. And with the increased valuations, it's an opportunistic taking of extra tax money, which would normally go back to the citizens by reducing the levy. I saw four presentations the other night at Bellevue East. One of them didn't seem to be in step with the rest of it. So, what would I cut? New playground equipment and shelter at Everett Park, 2 million and change, a shelter and a restroom. I would cut or defer that. Hayworth American Heroes Park sanitary improvements, a million four. I would cut or defer that. CCTV van replacement, that's what they go looking at the sewers with, 425,000. Is the whole van shot, or is it just pieces of equipment that could be put into a new van at substantially less cost? I don't know. Bunker gear lockers, 55,000. I understand this is for 55 lockers. Cities should be consulting with Cornhusker State Industries down in Lincoln. That's the prison that makes all sorts of wonderful furniture for both that type of thing and for the library and stuff. That's required by law. I don't see that as a, as an option, but I think we could probably do less than 1,000 bucks per locker cost. Replacing a Ford Explorer for permits inspection. I guess we need a four-wheel drive for that. Gee whiz, my two-wheel pickup truck gets around pretty good all the time and stuff, but 60,000 bucks for that. 70,000 bucks for a leased vehicle for fleet maintenance. Crew cab. How often do we have to transit four people in a crew-type vehicle when the regular pickup truck do the job? Oh, but we need a standard cab, a couple lines down below that and stuff. Replace restroom building in Washington Park, $250,000. Amazing. I'm in the wrong business. Parks. Banner College Heights Bike Trail, 325,000. 15, okay. Hayworth Park drainage ditch, 700,000. American Heroes Park amphitheater, 650,000. And a couple others here.
And that's your time, sir.
I would defer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Kyle Roan.
My name is Kyle Roan, and I live at 1908 Madison Street here in Bellevue, just around the corner. And since I've got a couple extra seconds, I'm going to read an email from Mary Stannack. She wrote me an email. She said I would support your recall.
Sir, that's not allowed at the public hearing. If you have remarks that you would like to make yourself, you're welcome to do that.
So, I don't have a First Amendment right to say whatever I want within my three minutes? Is that what you're telling me, Mayor?
If you have statements that you would like to make, you can do that, but the rules do not permit an email to be read by you.
I certainly want to pay my first taxes, but I don't feel our tax money is being spent wisely or responsibly. Also, are these capital investments really, are these capital investments really going to benefit citizens? It seems more likely that people like me will struggle to afford to stay in their homes. In 2018, Rusty was the mayoral candidate. His platform was fiscal responsibility and reduction in our city debt. Today, our debt is 22% higher than it was when you took office. Rusty and the council want to push the debt even higher with this capital improvement project. The mayor and his council want to pass tonight a 42% budget increase over last year for capital improvement projects to make Bellevue better. Better for whom, is my question. How does a $250,000 park bathroom make things better for someone who's at risk of losing their home? Last year, the city spent over 700,000 on unbudgeted police cars. You can't manage a budget. What surprises will you have for us next year, Mr. Mayor and the council? Predatory tax practices are the words used when taxes are used to displace homeowners using property taxes. Predatory tax practices. Realtors benefit when you're forced to sell your home. Why? Because they get to profit thousands of dollars from the sale. I would argue an extreme conflict of interest exists when elected officials use their office to enhance their business and profitability. Developers, entrepreneurs, and venture capitalists invest their money in the development of property, not taxpayers. Looking at the Highway 34 corridor on Sarpy GPS, or GIS, it looks like to be mostly privately-owned land except for tax lots 14A and B. That's a 43-acre lot that the city acquired in May of last year. How was that land acquired? I know you're not going to answer any questions. What deals have been made with other landowners? Is the city going to tell us in three months that we need to spend unbudgeted money to buy other land? Like we bought police cars? So, since I've got 15 seconds left, it's time for property taxes in Nebraska to stop. I encourage you all to go to epicoption.org, read for yourself, find a petition signing event near you, and sign the petition. Get that initiative on the ballot. It almost passed in the legislature this year.
Sir, your time is finished. Please step away from the podium.
If we get that on the ballot, we will pass it. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks for my First Amendment rights.
Our next speaker is Jean Black.
Jean Black, I live at 2814 Ponderosa Drive. A lot of what I'd like to address has already been spoken to here. Raising property, raising taxes 42% during a year, whenever, everybody has taken a 10% to 20% hit on wages and savings just seems like a bad idea. I also reviewed the things that are being, the money is going to be spent on, the capital improvement projects. I also noticed a $250,000 bathroom in Washington Park. I went down there before I came here. The bathroom is fully functional. I see no reason. That bathroom would cost more than my house, so it must be one heck of a bathroom. I also noticed a $750,000 charge for a trench or ditch in Hayworth Park. That's got to be a really nice ditch that's going to be built to be worth $750,000. Some of the other things, other items I noticed, I didn't have time to go over the documents completely. 50,000 for a GPS unit. I don't know who's buying GPS units for $50,000 or what those capabilities are of that GPS unit, but that seems like a high price. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Huffstutler.
I will pass on my time tonight. Everyone has well-articulated what I have to say.
Thank you. Sorry. Barb Belt is next.
Hello, my name is Barb Belt, and I live at 3102 Spring Boulevard in Bellevue. I've been a homeowner for 30 years, and I've never spoke at a council meeting until now. But I want to say that I do not support the budget, and here are a few reasons why. Governor Pillen just established a working group to look at Nebraska property values because, in his words, "An unbearable burden on Nebraska homeowners." Nebraska is ranked seventh highest in the United States in property values, or property taxes, I'm sorry, per the Platt Institute. So, it's, it's, it is an unbearable burden on us. The bulk of the responsibility for this budget seems to lie on the homeowners, who are a fraction of the population of Bellevue. So, it's significant, and we feel it. Public support, I feel, in my opinion, is not there because of the state of the economy. Median incomes are down, and you can find that information on any Statistica website that's out there. Inflation is at historic highs, which reduces our ability to spend. And property taxes are, increases are at the highest, are at some of the highest levels ever. So, it just really feels to me that it's out of touch. And even though I want it, I would really love a 42% increase in my salary. I can't have it. I've written budgets as well, and the income has to be there. And the property owner's income is not there to justify it. Homeowners, what happens, the trickle-down effect, if you continue to tax us to the max? Homeowners can't support those Bellevue businesses that you're trying to attract and trying to build here. If we're taxed to the max, we have to rein in our spending, and where don't we spend that money? Bellevue businesses. What's going to happen? Those businesses will close. It just, it doesn't make sense to me. The budget is crumbling the homeowners' foundations, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please, just hold the applause after each one.
If there are additional people who would have signed up to speak? If there are additional people who would have signed up to speak, um why don't you come on up?
My name is Linda Forrest, I live at thirty-three thirty-two Ron Boulevard in Bellevue, Nebraska, Two Springs. Two Springs neighborhood. Um I'm asking for some compassion from all of you, I mean, really. Mayor Hike, you posted on Bellevue four-one-one asking the citizens to support this forty-two percent increase in the budget. Overwhelmingly, the responses were no. Overwhelmingly, they told sob stories about their lives and what this will do to them. Does it really matter what your constituents say? Do you really care about them? Do you care about how this affects their lives? Because the response that I got from you, when I asked that, had nothing to do with that. You didn't answer my questions, you just kinda spiraled around it. It's a simple question. All of you, all of you need to think about that and ask yourself. It may not affect you personally, but it affects somebody that you love and it affects the people that you represent. Along with inflation, which is out of control. It may be slowing down, but the prices aren't going back down, it just means that they're not going up. The increase in valuation, we protested or disputed our increase of forty-five thousand dollars. My husband took pictures. We have not done any improvements to our house in the last thirty years, now that we're retired, we're going to do it. But you cannot tell me that, and I know this isn't your department, but you need to take these things into consideration. We have increased property valuations, inflation, jobs, they're not paying that much. Um we have to make, as homeowners and citizens, improvements within our means. I don't understand why the city can't cut back a little bit also. You know, a forty-two percent increase in budget right now is, is kinda like we're living in the Twilight Zone, it's an episode of the Twilight Zone. Here's a cut in budget for ya, I don't buy Fritos anymore.
Fifteen seconds.
They're now filled five dollars and sixty-nine cents at Hy-Vee. We as citizens can do something like that, you guys can look at the big picture, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional individuals who'd like to come up and speak?
Just want me to sign on this, on this sheet here.
And state your name and address when you're done.
My name's Crystal Roan and I'm at nineteen oh eight Madison Street here in Bellevue. I just have one question, really. I would like free the council members to, I'm, please, I pray that you guys will say no to this. Um increase in our debt and the increase in our taxes. So that's really all I wanna say is please, please, I pray that you'll say no, thank you.
Thank you.
Alejandro Larios, eleven thirty-one oh four Lingwood Drive. I ask Mr. Cook and everybody else to please, again, be sensible about our situation. We cannot afford forty-two percent increase of nothing or twenty percent. I already spoke last Thursday of all the things that I can help you out and figure it out how to lower like the water in the splash pads, not running twelve hours a day and hundreds of gallons wasted. I know we have nice electric police cars, nothing against the police, love the police, I will always support them. But not to the expense of us, why an electric car? Everybody's been talking about the, the bathroom. Valuation houses, my house, this year, thirty thousand dollars more. And as many of my, my neighbors, we haven't done any improvements. I think the last improvement that I did was like ten, twelve years ago, in my kitchen. I lived in California before and the only way your property will increase the value is if you do improvements. That's the only way, you call the city, they come, they figure it out how much more your house is valued, because what you did, and they go for that. Right here, just because my neighbor sold their house, they did a Mickey Mouse job to sell it at a high price and because my house looks similar to theirs, now my house is the same price, that's ridiculous. Like my neighbor said, it seems like we're living in Twilight Zone or worse. I've been a neigh- a neighbor in Bellevue for tw- almost twenty years. Happy to live here, my kids, they're, you know, they're citizens here, my teacher, my daughter is a teacher, a Bellevueese. She wants to do their lives here, how, how, how are we gonna do it? Be sensible, be, come on, have compassion. Mr. Hike, I told you on Thursday, I voted for you, but I have this thing that is nagging me, that remorse. Because I, you know, I'm very conservative, as a conservative person, I conservative in everything. Money, my morals, everything else. And I wish that you were that way, that's the reason why I voted for you. I have voted for Mr. Cook and I have supported many other people too, because I know that they're conservatives. But this is beyond being liberal or, I don't, I not even know, I don't have a word for it. Yes, I don't have a word for it.
That's your time, ma'am, thank you.
I'm done.
Thank you, anybody else want to speak, please come forward. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding resolution number two zero two-three dash two four, please come forward.
My name is Sandy Jones, I live at ten fourteen Euro Circle, Normandy Hills. I just wanna ask a question, I spoke at the last meeting, I think I got my points across. Um would us as citizens ever been allowed to weigh in on this budget? Were we, were we, I can, I mean, before, before this all happened and now we're being told that it's a done deal, you've already voted, blah, blah, blah. You had to have the other meeting because you didn't have one before. Would our input for future have made any difference to any of you? I mean, is this one of those deals where you're not gonna say, you guys can't answer me? I mean, it's, it's a question that I'm answering, asking for, you know, the future. So it doesn't happen, so we, you know, we can trust people with our money, just like we have to trust the bank with our budget and our bank and our, our, everything we do in our lives daily. Our medical, our food, our cars, everything. Are we allowed to be in on this budget? Can anybody answer me? Or can't you answer me, I just wanna know that.
We can answer, we're gonna let the public speak and I know the council members are, are writing questions that you guys are asking, so typically is how we do it, we answer the questions after the public's been able to. So we're not answering everything.
So you may be answering that after I sit down and I'm the last one. Okay, well, and then I wanted to speak on the parks. We love our park in Normandy Hills and they took it out. And they replaced it with one I could put in my backyard, so I didn't get that, I didn't understand that. So to me, that was like a budget thing, but, and I knew that they had to take the park out because it wasn't meeting certain safety issues of our time now. But, I mean, we have half of that park now. And I, I, I didn't understand that, why didn't we have, I mean, they took out things that should have never been took out, the merry-go-round they just put in two years ago. And we're like, they took it out and trashed it, it's gone, I don't know where it went. But I mean, stuff like that, when I hear about the parks, you know, them shutting down parks. And we were really glad we got one, but we were shocked when we went there. So it's kinda like the bathroom in Washington's park, so um, you know, we paid more taxes, but we got less. So I think that's a lot what we're feeling and our park is used a lot. Our children in that neighborhood go to the park, so, but we do have a smaller one, we, we're glad we weren't ones that were axed completely. But I will be looking forward to hearing from you guys after this is uh
Fifteen seconds.
That um, that question is answered about the budget, instead of just how you guys feel, how you guys live. Is it all about just you guys, how you live, how you do your budgets compared to how
That's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Ryan Weback, one-two-zero-one-six, South Forty-Ninth Street. I just wanna make a comment on, um, I think we're missing an important mark here. And that's the, the vision of the strategic foresight of, of what is the for- the increases going to get us, I, I hear like, hey, it's gonna build the community, it's gonna repair infrastructure, all great things, right? But what's, what's the end goal here, and Mayor, you, you kinda touched on it, or you mentioned it about a, possibly a twenty percent reduction in levy in a couple of years. Is that the goal, right? I don't know, or if, if that's, if that is, and if it's in black and white somewhere, my apologies, I haven't seen that, but I think, um you know, if the council was bold enough to raise the budget forty percent, they should also be bold enough to put it in black and white. What is this gonna get us, what's the vision, besides making things better, right, generalistically? Is it, hey, do this now, suck it up for a couple of years, you're gonna see a twenty percent reduction, that is our goal. We're laser-focused the next two years, whatever, to make that happen. I think it would get a little bit better understanding with, with the, the community. And although it still doesn't help those who are really being, you know, pinched by the pennies and, and uh with homes and whatnot. It, it would just bring a little bit better understanding, so um I, I would urge you all to reinforce the reasoning for these hikes and provide that vision and that goal to the community. Um for them to look forward to something, like they're, they're doing their part, they're ponying up, ponying up the dollars, right? No kidding, what is that gonna get them in the two years or whatever that plan may be? That's all I have.
Can you state your last name again?
Weback.
Weback, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else wanted to speak regarding seven A, please come forward.
My name's Dave Loftus Senior, I reside at eighty-three oh six South Twenty-third Street. We were annexed about five years ago, we were told that the uh, that our taxes would go down, that we would see much improvement. In the five years that I've been there, my rights have been taken away and we got no parking signs put up. Constantly complaining, arguing why we can't get snow removal. Either myself or the people on the end of the street that own a construction company have to plow for ninety-year-old people that live on my street. I get it, we've got eight houses, we got annexed, our taxes went up, at least we can get some public works over there. We don't see anybody, we constantly call in, we talk to people, we get told it'll happen. Weeks, months go by, it doesn't happen. Then as us as homeowners get harassed, hopefully that's being addressed. Um I've talked to my city councilperson and I believe she's gonna make that happen. The other thing I have to say, if, if we wanna make Bellevue great, why aren't we spending more money on like cutting the grass, on the mediums and the rideaways? I was just down at Hayworth Park, there's grass four feet tall and, on the uh south side of the street there, it's four feet tall where the old soccer fields used to be. We're talking about doing other things, let's take care of what we got. Let's make that great. Drive along the city of Bellevue and see how much grass in the mediums, how much glass, how much trash. That's what I'm asking. I, I believe some of the city trucks for the plows are fifteen, twenty years old, let's get some of that so their equipment's not breaking down every winter. Every year, I, I go out and plow multiple properties myself and I see a city truck broke down and I, hey, you guys need help? No, the truck broke down, it's twenty years old. Why don't we spend money to the city where we already have and make that, and once we get there, then talk about expanding. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to speak regarding seven A, please come forward.
Mike Mosier, three oh three Martin Drive. I just have one question. You get your forty-two percent increase in your budget, you get all your projects done. Does the city budget come back down next year, do our property taxes come back down next year? That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Larry Kane, eight-nine-ten, South Thirteenth Street. Uh I'm retired, fixed income, retired from civil service, I heard of it, and uh we were annexed here a few years ago and uh we were told that our taxes were gonna go up about eight hundred dollars a year. They actually went up over a thousand. And uh, and we were told at that time, well, you're gonna get a, a library card with that. That was all that was actually said. And um now we have to pay for garbage pickup, which we already had. And uh we already had police protection, we had fire, fire protection, we had, you know, our streets were cleaned in the wintertime by the county. Never had a problem. But uh it seems like, in the past, it used to be tax and spend. But it seems like now it's switched around to spend and tax. And I don't understand why that is and with uh the way the economy is right now, everybody's hurt, go to the grocery store, look at the prices in the grocery store, everybody knows that. And I don't know how anybody with a clear conscience could possibly vote in a forty-two percent increase. And I think if you go through that uh budget, line item by line item, there's, there's a little bit of pork in there that could be cut out, I think. Uh two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a bathroom. There's, there's a lot of different items in there that I think, maybe, I don't, maybe that's just an estimate or what, I don't know. But uh I hope you all sleep well at night if you vote this in with a clear conscience, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding seven A, please come forward.
Tim Schulte, forty oh three Quail Drive. Moved to Bellevue, Bellevue about four months ago and uh so this is my first time at any um public event last week and this week in the city of Bellevue. Um what I've heard last week and this week is overwhelming opposition um to this budget increase. You're voting on a budget and what that means to me is you're voting on what's available to spend, not what you can take from your citizens. My ask is you listen to your constituents, the many that spoke last week and the many that are speaking tonight to sharpen your pencils and limit this budget. Last week, Mayor Hike, you mentioned that uh, you mentioned a little bit about city debt and uh here we are increasing the budget. Are you gonna use that to lower the debt or raise it? At home, if I increase, it's to pay down, right, if I, if I'm looking to increase my gains, it's first to, to pay down debts before I look to do additional spending. first to, to pay down debts before I look to do additional spending. Um, I think you have a problem with your value proposition to the citizens of your, of your city. Um, and you need to explain why the sacrifice today will be worth it over the course of the next year and into the future. I think you've got a big problem with that, I think all of our government, uh, at a local and city, and even federal level, have that problem where the value proposition is fading for us citizens. Um, and I think that needs to be proven to us, I think it needs to be not just proven in this room, but I think it needs to be proven over the course of the next year. So that when, whatever budget you guys pass for this year, I think we as citizens need to know, what's it going to? How does it benefit us and why should we support it?
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak regarding resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-two-four, please come forward? Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward?
I just can't resist. Hi, I'm Mary Nevsker, I live at twenty-five oh-five Edward Street in Bellevue. I moved here from a, what I now know to be very low-tax state. And I moved here to be closer to my family because of a personal situation. As a retired teacher, I cannot afford to continue living here. I, I don't think, I'm cutting back as much as I can. I just was appalled when I read through what you're spending your money on. Now granted, I lived in a rural area, did not have to deal with city things. But the money is, it's outrageous what you're spending your money on. And I was thinking, I've been here a little over seven years. I need to get more involved at the local level and I will be following the city council much more closely in the future. But in the seven years I've lived here, I thought, wow, my property has increased in valuation almost seventy thousand dollars. So what did I do to get that seventy thousand dollar increase in my property value? I planted seven bushes, yeah, that's what I did. They're about this tall. And somehow, in seven years, my property valuation is up seventy thousand dollars, almost seventy thousand. Now, like other people who have spoken, I just, the, the amount of money you are spending on really strange things to me anyway, very strange. I don't know how some of these things can cost fifty thousand dollars, two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, seventy dollars and twenty-three cents, I don't know. I wish you had some way of breaking this down in a more logical manner than having to print out something like this to see where the money would be going. I, I, I'm just appalled, and like the gentleman said, those of you who vote for this, I hope you sleep well at night, I hope you feel that you have honestly done the best for the citizens of Bellevue. Because I seriously question that, I seriously question that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward?
Did I scare everybody off?
No, they might be waiting for you. Being courteous, so.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward regarding resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-two-four? Okay, ask one more time, anybody else wanting to speak regarding resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-two-four, please come forward? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing, hearing portion, and, um, been listening to me talk an awful lot these last few days, so I'm gonna let, I'm gonna, I wanna talk about the vision a little bit. Uh, I did close it, but I'm gonna have to reopen it if, uh, if the council member wants to make a motion. I'd, I'd be willing to make that motion, I just a question, are, are there other people?
I, I don't know, but, uh, I guess, that's only me. But my name is Maria Valdez Hernandez.
Chief, I was gonna check, so if you wanna, we have to open it, so if you wanna open it.
Yep. I'll make the motion to reopen the public.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw to reopen the public hearing on seven A, resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-two-four?
Yeah, my name is Maria Valdez, um, I moved from Texas about-
Ma'am, can you just hold on for a minute, the council members will need to vote to reopen it for public hearing for you.
All right, so, motion was by Casey, second by McCaw to reopen, any questions on that? Please vote.
Paul Booting, yes, motion carries.
All right, thank you, so now please state your name and address.
Thank you, yeah, my name is Maria Valdez Hernandez, I live on one-twenty-nine oh-seven, South Twenty-ninth Avenue. I moved from Texas, um, like, probably like, uh, thirty years ago. And, um, first I lived here on the mobile homes where the flat was a couple of years ago. But, um, I lived there probably like, a couple of years, and then I moved to Twenty-ninth Avenue. I got my house worth a hundred-and-fifty, fifty-six thousand dollars, and it went up close to a hundred thousand dollars. Like everybody's saying, I haven't done a lot of improvements for my house. Now with your raising the taxes, um, the value of my house is, um, that much. Um, I, I, I don't think everybody is okay with that. You know, to raising the taxes, especially because for some reason you start raising the value of the houses for no reasons. I feel sorry that I never come up and say anything about that. A lot of people buying houses there, they put them up for sale and then they sell on the very next day. That's good for whoever is selling their houses, but not for the ones who wanna to keep our home, for their children. So, hopefully you guys taken considerations that, like, the, everybody here, we're here for the same reason. See, if, you see, I go and do things on my own to work on my house, to do things so I can afford to keep my house. See, I'm more dirty, I know how to do a lot of stuff on my own, and that's what I do to keep my house. But now I probably have to keep working more to paying all these taxes, it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing's open again, so you got one more shot, anybody else wanting to speak regarding seven A, please come forward? And Chief Clary verified there was nobody else in the other room?
Not.
Okay. Anybody else wanting to speak, please come forward? Yeah, we, you did use all your time, so. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing if there's nobody else. Uh, so again, I'm, I'm, I would like to talk about the vision, if the council members have anything before I talk about that. Um, I wanna give them an opportunity to address anything they've heard, or, or they can wait till I'm done. Anybody else have any statements or anything? Okay. Just feel like everybody's tired of listening to me. Um, so the vision, yes, there is a vision. And it is to get those municipal, that municipal sit down. Sarpy County invested, it's gonna be higher than this, but right now they've got a commitment for a hundred-and-sixty million dollars to build a sewer system across southern Sarpy County. I don't know if that's new news to everybody, but that system is in from about Seventy-second Street to the Missouri River, comes down Highway Thirty-four. That has opened up a ton of land for development. Seventy percent of Sarpy County was not developable because there is no sewer down there. And I heard someone say, um, our budget was the only one out of line. Um, I wanted to be very transparent, I went over numbers very carefully so everybody could at least hear them once. I think I went over them three times, I know it was redundant. Sarpy County went over theirs, they have a two-hundred-and-seventy-two million dollar budget. Nobody said a word about it. That investment along Highway Thirty-four with the sewer has brought multiple potential tenants for that ground on south side of Bellevue. There's not enough water there. That brings on an eighteen million dollar investment to get M U D water to that area. It has been discussed, there is a project, it's a, a, um, public-private, I don't know if that's the right word, but it's, uh, it has a lot to do with, and, and it's a military project and it's a commercial, public-commercial project that are combined together. They are building a two-hundred-and-fifty million dollar office complex on the northeast corner on the ground that the purchase, the city took under control. That looks like it will bloom to a half a billion dollars, I mean, two-hundred-and-fifty, we're pretty confident, it's, that is a minimum. We have plants, we have a, um, computer, um, yeah, I'm not even gonna say anymore than that, it's a, we have plants that are building, they're interested in building down along the Thirty-four corridor. We're talking, one plant that we're talking with is over a billion-dollar investment with fifteen-hundred employees. The other corner, we're looking at a entertainment venue. Bellevue does not have an attraction, everybody goes, well, why don't we have what this city has, why don't we have what that city has? I know that, I, I just raised, my teenagers are out of the house now. Um, so many times they ask me, Dad, what can I do? It's like, oh, I, I guess you can go to this city or that city, we, we had no attractions. That entertainment area is designed to draw regional traffic from two-hundred, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty mile an hour, two-hundred-and-fifty mile radius. It's an indoor-outdoor water park, it's an eighty million dollar facility, that is not in your budget. It's an eighty million dollar facility that includes a deep diving wells for divers and a fifty-meter Olympic pool for competitions. It also, um, is set up for that, three, uh, three thousand seats, I believe. That is where you're gonna draw entertainment in. Now there also, I know everybody's heard of this at least once, um, we're trying to get a racetrack and casino in the same area to put it in that entertainment district. That is a two-and-a-half, a minimum, if the casino comes in, you have to have the track in there for, for one year and then they could make, and this is not our project, these are other developers, these are, these are people from out of state with big casino money. This would be probably the main attraction in the area if this happens, in the entire region. So, when the casino's in, the minimum forecast is two-and-a-half million dollars to the city, just in gambling revenues. Gambling's here whether you like it or not, forty-eight million dollars was wagered last year just in Keno alone, just in Sarpy County. All that traffic's going to Iowa, so, uh, there's, there's people that have said, we want it, we don't want it. Um, it's a money, it's a money deal, um, that, that really helps Bellevue. The county gets additional two-point-five million dollars, the state gets fifteen million dollars. I'm gonna tell you, Sarpy is the fastest-growing counties in the state of Nebraska. Bellevue is the fastest-growing city, and the fastest-growing county of the state of Nebraska. We, we would love to get a little bit more money out of the state because we know that benefits the state. They have, they have been responsive, they're giving money to offset some of these expenses. They gave twenty million dollars for the project I just talked about with the office campus. Um, there, there, we're looking at other money, um, federal and state, because that's gonna benefit the entire state of Nebraska. Just those projects, we are around two billion dollars or more. Our total, our total valuation city of Bellevue is about five-and-a-half billion dollars. If we add two billion dollars worth of investment, worth of additional tax base, bring in additional sales tax dollars, or, I'm sorry, bring in it, sales tax dollars as well as entertainment dollars, that two-and-a-half million I talked about from the casino, that is the transformational change in our vision that will set Bellevue up for a great place to live and an affordable place to live. So that is the vision, we do have the vision. Somebody asked, um, if it's just a one-and-done, I mentioned earlier, it's probably a two-year deal. Um, so, we're not ready, if the valuation goes up, I, I don't know what the council will decide to do or how, how financing is. Right now, we can fund that, uh, that capital improvements at about three percent because your city has a double-A-plus credit rating. Our bonds that we carry right now are under two percent. I'd love to, I'd love to have, borrow, be able to borrow money at that percent. So when, when you say forty-two percent increase, that's in the capital improvement budget. We're not spending forty-two percent in one year, we're financing it at three percent interest. Sure, there's gonna be some payments included in that, but it, it's not raising your, it's not raising forty-two percent. Um, there is a vision, we've been working on this for the entire five years, that project I talked about on the corner's been in the works for seven years. It's coming to fruition, the utilities are there, the water's gonna be there by the end of next year. Um, so if you want to see that transformational change in Bellevue from a bedroom community where the residents pay for everything and you have minimum amenities, but we can, we can stay, we can stay where we're at, we don't, we don't need to, we don't need to raise taxes. But I'm telling you, I, I feel that Bellevue's got a perfect opportunity, and, um, that is what I am willing to take, and I think this council, um, will find out. Um, I, there's more, there's more than that, we're talking, uh, to a lot more people, a lot, a lot of good things, uh, coming to Bellevue. But let me hit on a couple things I wanna talk about, and I guess the, the vision, um, a couple people asked about that, the forty-two percent we talked about. Sharpening the pencil, we, again, I'm gonna mention it, sixteen-hundred-and-seventy dollars per person, that's what we spend in the city of Bellevue. The next closest city in Sarpy County is thirty-five hundred dollars. There is nobody lower than that. So we're not spending anything on anybody, that's why, that's why you see the bare minimums right now, but I'm telling you, you've got good police protection, you've got good fire protection, you've got good streets, go drive in Omaha if you don't believe me. There's a lot of bang for your buck that you're getting. I'm gonna take a little bit of a break and just see if there's any other council members that would like to make any further statements or questions.
I, I'll just be brief, I, I second everything that Mayor Hike said. We have a budget task force that myself, uh, Mr. McCaw and Kathy Welch sit on. There's a lot of the time and effort that we put into this, I've had numerous phone calls, and I'm not saying that I answer, can answer, or, my answers satisfy the people that I'm talking to, but I think by the stuff that Mayor Hike was saying, when you start talking to them of a vision and, and, and stuff, I, I think they feel a little bit more comfortable. I, I, I think we are heading in the right direction, I think we are doing the right thing, we will probably have a couple bumpy- I think we are doing the right thing. We will probably have a couple bumpy years. But I'm telling you, if we start seeing growth and, and things get filled in, I think the whole city is gonna benefit. The project that the mayor just talked about, that's gonna go, uh, out there. I think that started planning about two thousand seventeen. We didn't even think of sewer and water. Uh, I, I don't know. I, I, I'm just gonna say from, from bottom of my heart, I believe we're doing the right thing. We do have a committee that goes through this. We spent a lot of time and effort on it. Um, and I, I know you're not gonna be happy as far as my personal feeling, but I think we're doing the right thing and trying to get this city to another level. We got sixty-five thousand people in this city. I think we gotta keep moving forward and create, keep on creating, uh, opportunities. It'd be great if M U D. Would put that water in. That's eighteen million. Okay, we're talking forty some million, forty-two million. That's eighteen million. I think that, and, and we're trying to fix more streets and bridges and stuff like that. I think we're doubling that. So what we normally spend, I, I, I just think it's things that need to be done, not only for the current conditions of things are in today, but also we're, we're trying to get to. So uh, I think we're doing the right thing and moving in the right direction.
Councilwoman Watch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I wanna, uh, address some of the questions that were asked. I'm on the Budget Task Committee as well. And we met yesterday with a special meeting because we heard your concerns on Thursday. And I asked the question, can we cut the budget? Can we cut what we spend? Can we reduce our mill levy? And the answer was yes, we could reduce the mill levy. It would amount to forty dollars per year of your hundred thousand dollars of evaluation. But along with that, we have to cut fire, police and the parks. The money that is being spent is capital improvement costs, big picture things. It's when at your house, it's the big stuff. You have to put on a new roof. You have to put on a new air conditioner. You have to add a new furnace. It's the big, it's the big things. And in a city, I know there was some confusion about debt. It's different than at your own household. You, you have, we have debt to maintain our good rating and because we have a finance director that runs a tight, tight ship. Not only personally, but within our city. Um, your assessments, the reason your taxes have gone up is because of Sarpy County evaluations. The assessor's office assesses your values. That is a true statement. Don't blame the city that your property taxes and your properties have gone up. Blame your neighbors for selling their houses at higher prices. Because that has caused, listen, I'm in real estate. I am shocked at what properties cost. What properties are valued at? And what the taxes are myself. All of us on this council are all taxpayers. We're all feeling it. And it's not like we make the big bucks by being here. We are public servants for this. We also could have voted last Tuesday on the budget. We preferred to delay it to this week so we could listen to you on Thursday and open it up for today. Um, and some of these, these costs that we have are matching items. And Mr. Risto, correct me if I'm wrong in anything that I'm saying here, but some of these items, we have to spend a certain amount to get the federal government to meet, to get the state government to meet, to get some of the investors to meet with us. So, yeah, and again, a budget is a guideline. You know, when you sit down to budget your own household, you don't say, I'm gonna spend, you know, a hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents at the grocery store every single week. It ebbs and flows. And in order for us to vote on items, it has to be a budgeted item. And then they work on getting the costs narrowed down. All the department heads do that. The costs narrowed down to get it below the budget, within the budget, because if we go over, there's other complications that happen because of that. So I am, um, proud to be on this city council. I feel like we have great leadership with Mr. Mayor, Rusty Hike. I feel like we have great leadership with Jim Risto. Being on the Budget Task Force, there were a lot of things that were asked for and we said, go back and start cutting your budgets because it's not something we can do. And I know me personally, I don't wanna cut police, fire and parks so that my taxes are forty dollars per thousand, hundred thousand dollars of assessment less. So, um, I'm gonna be, you know, I feel like we are doing the right thing. I understand you're not happy. I understand you don't like it. I'm not crazy about the assessments either. I am not crazy about the taxes I pay. And we're all gonna have to tighten our belts because it's the time of the year, the time of the season. So we appreciate your input. We do listen to what you say. But again, I feel like we're doing the right things for the, the city of Bellevue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the very challenging vice-like position that the council and the mayor and the administration is in. It's not easy making these decisions and the budget has to be passed by the end of this month. So the challenges before us, I just wanna mention three things that I heard to answer questions. One was, it's already been voted on. It has not been voted on by me or anyone up here. And there has not been, to my knowledge, and I have not been a part of even a straw vote where you poll people and ask them how they're going to vote. If that ever occurred, I knew nothing of it and I don't believe that it took place. So that was one thing. Thursday night's meeting, I was there. I tried to be as responsive as I could. I walked around. I even shook hands with at least one person, I think two that are in here tonight. All of the council members were there. Many people said, why isn't the council here? Every single council member who was in town and was able to be there, five of us, all were there and we were listening. We may have come to other conclusions, but we were there and we have been listening. One last thing, and I know that it isn't directly related here, but it's certainly to me appropriate. For those people who don't know about or haven't heard about the Nebraska State Homestead exemption, it is available to help people, single people over sixty-five who earn as a single person, less than forty-four thousand dollars a year. And I believe we have that now on channel seventeen. And I believe we have it on our social media for those people that don't know about. One other thing that I'm not sure people are aware of. Thank you. It's posted here. It shows the websites where you can apply. The legislature also implemented just last year an opportunity to get either a check or a direct deposit back from the state for your property tax. Only sixty percent of the people applied for that. So forty percent, if it's average, forty percent of you didn't file for that likely because you didn't even know about it. So I've asked, we're now putting that on channel seventeen, so the public is aware of it. You can see it, both of those websites, two opportunities with, it's not gonna help everybody, but the Nebraska property tax one is for every single property owner, every single property owner. So you all qualify for that. I don't know why the legislature decided to make you file for it rather than do like the other one that they implemented and it's already deducted and on your property tax bill. But this one you have to file for. So that information is posted and those were the three things that I wanted to make people aware of. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I know that there's absolutely nothing I can say here to, uh, make anybody feel better uh, about this budget this evening. I know you all have very strong convictions. You're all very intelligent. Clearly many of you have done a lot of homework on this. I just wanna assure you that we have also done the homework on this. And a lot of these estimates that were brought up tonight, the, the dollar amounts for the, for the, uh, the restroom at, at the park, you know, those are estimates based on current conditions. Who knows what that's actually gonna cost in the, in the long run. But, uh, the main thing is I want you to know that personally I've fielded a, a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, and I appreciate the, the input. It didn't, it did not fall on wasted ears. Um, but for me personally, uh, I believe in this vision that the mayor has shared. As a matter of fact, that's the reason I was excited to get on this city council because I believe in that mission, uh, and that vision, uh, for the city. And I think, uh, the only way that's gonna happen is part of what we're proposing tonight. You know, I'll speak for myself, uh, this vision, uh, for me personally, uh, this year with this new budget is less than a dollar a day, less than a dollar a day to see this vision hopefully come to fruition. And I think it's worth it in the long run because I think down the road, we will see, as the mayor mentioned, we will see our property tax at the very least stagnate, but hopefully lower. But we're never gonna get there if we keep doing what we've been doing for my last twenty-five years in Bellevue. So that's all I, I'd like to share. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm gonna go back to a couple of questions. I, while they were talking, I was looking through here. Um, back to the lady with the Normandy Hills questions. I will ask about the, the park, but part of that vision on the thirty-four interchange with the new office complex gives Normandy Hills that second entrance that they have been fighting for, for twenty years or fifteen years, whatever that's been. So that's a big enhancement to that whole area down there. So, uh, that's one of the, the benefits that comes. Um, the lady talked about the splash pads running. I've asked that question before. My understanding is that's, that's filtered water. It's, it's repeated. It's not fresh water running down the drain, but I'll check on that. That's the way I understood it. Somebody mentioned, uh, I, I posted on social media. I did post on social media. I, I'm very active. I try to answer every question that comes my way. If I missed you, I, I, I get a lot of emails every day, so hit me again if, if that happens. But I try to get back to everybody. I know this council does a really good job of getting back. So we do try to involve you. We get a lot of calls. So people do, people are involved. You, you ask if you can get involved. Yes, you can get involved. Um, you can get on committees. You can put your name in for the planning commission. You can just, as simple as making a phone call to your council member gets you involved. And an example of that is we get people that are adamant, cut out all the parks. We don't need them. The next person that calls us, we need more parks. We need to improve these parks. So these are the questions that, that come up with all the council members and they're, they're, they're tough. I mean, it's like, yeah, that, I mean, you listen to a person, you say, yeah, that's a pretty good idea. Then a council member or some other person from the public questions you on it and then you know, how it was terrible idea. So we're, we do work this very hard and, and we're, we are working for the citizens of Bellevue. That, I, I guarantee you that. I think, I think we've addressed pretty much everything to talk about. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a restroom? Yeah. Uh, before I was even mayor, uh, we put a, a bathroom on Beth's Road in Everett Park. That bathroom was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars eight years ago. Uh, the one we built down there. I was astounded by that price. One of the reasons I, it's one of the reasons I ran for mayor, items like that. But you don't realize that you have to meet government standards on it. You gotta pay the Davis Bacon wage on those things since it's a government project. There's a lot of things that go into that. Um, so our own, our own government is causing, not ours, the federal government's causing a lot of these prices. I, I think we've hit on, on pretty much everything. I'm sorry if we missed anything. Um, but, uh, I'm gonna, at this time, I'm, the, the public hearing's closed. We've heard from the council members. Um, I want our finance director just to come up and go over a couple of slides before we go any further and then, so the council has a fresh recollection of what, what we're voting on here tonight. So if you would do that, Rich, I appreciate it. And I wanna give Rich credit. He is, uh, we wouldn't spend anything if it was up to him. So he is always fighting us. So he is, he is a great director and I, I wouldn't want anybody else in that spot because he challenges us every day. So, uh, Rich with that, I'll just, um.
Uh, yeah, Rich Severson, Finance Director. Mayor, I think this group, your audience and the participants seem quite informed. I know, uh, they articulated some of the, you know, line item by line item. So I, I think, um, maybe instead of going over presentations that have already been given three times, maybe in, I could, uh, just respond to just a couple of specific questions, if that would be okay with you.
That's fine.
Uh, because I think we've given the, the basic information that, uh, that they needed to know such as, yeah, the budget's going up forty-two percent mostly due to, to the, uh, capital improvement items, uh, the taxes are going up fourteen percent, right in line with the valuations. I believe this group understands that fully. So, uh, a couple of things that I would like to say is just, uh, I, I did hear uh, one, one lady come up and said her, her house is now worth a hundred thousand dollars. The Bellevue tax on that is fifty-one dollars a month and that's for police, fire. You, you've mentioned this before for, uh, the streets, for the library. And I wanna make sure that people understand the city's portion of it. I'm not making an excuse. You're, you're right. If, uh, if you, you heard me before, if we could, uh, we would reduce those taxes. However, there's some ideas that you've actually sold pretty well, uh, as far as what we need to do next. None of these are set in stone. If we go along this next year and we find a better way to do it, we absolutely will. Uh, not every item may get approved by the council again when it comes before them. Some of the street projects, some, uh, who knows, maybe, uh, I'll get my way and one of the vehicles will be, you know, not purchased in the future. But anyway, um, I think, uh, you know, for, so for that hundred thousand dollar value, uh, fifty-one dollars uh, a month. Uh, one thing you mentioned on the bonds, yes, those bonds, I'm taking a little more conservative approach to forecasting. You're always optimistic guy. I'm here to protect the finances of the city. I'm gonna go out to four-ish percent and that means it's gonna cost us two million dollars. You know, each year, uh, the interest on that. However, the principal will try to align with the revenues that start to come back from those investments. So I think we can handle that. Yeah, it'll be a three and a half cent load on the, the levy next year and we're gonna have to find places to, uh, to get that. But anyway, we'll, we'll find a way to manage through it and, uh, and we're only gonna bond if I can't find the existing cash. Uh, in, in a lot of ways, some of these things that we do come in cheaper and, uh, we do have the cash on hand and we are not gonna bond if we can go ahead and use that exists, existing cash. And, uh, the other thing was, uh, the public hearing. Uh, I think that was probably my fault for, uh, advertising this. You didn't need to open this up to a public hearing. Last Thursday's hearing was, uh, sufficient to cover the public hearing to set the tax request. However, um, I'd like people to know, not one of them said anything about, well, why don't we just not do it? All of the council members were more than open to listen again to all of this. And this, this is from the finance director. I, I sit in some of the meetings and, uh, so I think they're doing everything they can to be open. Uh, and a couple of people from the SIDS that we annexed, please call me because I find And a couple of people from the SIDS that we annexed, please call me, because I find it hard to believe that the taxes went up. I think if we took a look at those, that would mean that the SIDS taxes had to be less than forty-six cents when we, because I think there's some things like fire protection and things that weren't included. And so any of them that, that were in a SIDS that thought, hey, I'm paying more, I'd be more than happy to talk to them. So that's it.
All right. I appreciate, appreciate everything you do, too.
Anything else from the council? So we're at seven A, Resolution Number Two-zero-two-three-dash-two-four. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Number Twenty-twenty-three-dash-twenty-four.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any discussion, comments, questions on motion?
I have four yes votes and one no vote, with Councilman Preister voting no.
Okay, the amended agenda takes us back to six. Request to approve the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, applicant, City of Bellevue. Do I have a motion? Councilman Casey?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine Capital Improvement
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any discussions, comments, questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, jumping around here, it's going to take me back to seven B. Approve an additional one percent in the base of restricted funds. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve Item Seven B.
I'll second it.
Motion by Welch, second by Cook. Any comments or questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item Seven C, approve ordinance number four-one-two-seven and adopt the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number forty-one-twenty-seven and adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any discussion, comments, or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I had this laying on my desk. I have an email from a, a party that has requested this. I think they want me to just give it to our clerk. So I don't, I don't know if I had to announce that or not during the meeting, but it's a email from Abree Robbins.
Okay.
And she's asked...
For the record.
Yeah, for the record, or whatever. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I got that in.
And Councilman Cook, I think, given the timing of that email, that can be included in the record upon motion of the city council. So if you'd like to make a motion to make that part of the record, given the timing of the receipt of the email.
So we need a motion to enter it, or, or, or it doesn't get entered?
We've never done this before. We just, just said we'd give it to the clerk. But I'll make a motion to submit an email from Abree Robbins to the record?
I'll second that. Thank you.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch, to submit a, a letter from Abree Robbins into the record.
And I, I just want to make a comment that this was on my desk, and it's dated, as far as sent, I think it was sent to all of us. It was sent to all of us, so technically, you probably have it as a record.
I do.
So that probably wasn't even necessary. I, I just caught that. But when I started reading it, she, I believe she wanted it to be considered part of the record. We all got it. The clerk got it. I probably didn't even need to make this motion, but it was sent today at two-twenty-eight PM, and our meeting was at five-thirty. Thank you.
Motion by Cook, second by Casey. Any other questions?
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, just to clarify, that was a motion by Cook, second by Kate, or Welch.
Oh. Got it.
Okay. Believe I've gotten through the full agenda, so I will take a motion to adjourn. Sorry. Don't give me that motion to adjourn. So we're at seven C. Approve ordinance number four-one-two-seven and adopt the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four fiscal year budget. Okay, motion by Cook, second by Casey. Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Any questions on seven C from the council?
I have four yes votes, one no vote, with Councilman Preister voting no. Motion carries.
Now I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you, and thank you to the public for coming out.